Honorable Arvin Mitchell is present, Madam Chair, three members present.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that, Lori. We will go ahead and move forward at this time to to invocation. I'm going to go ahead and ask staff to provide invocation for us this morning. Lorraine, can you do invocation for us this morning?
No, speaking that of there and then there's a lot more. And those are here with me and those are on Zoom. Well, it's nothing, but really, my good morning. What is watching? People, which are pulling out the coming in, coming out of the building, out of the number five, calling, we're trying to fight. You don't really know any of this. Just in the middle, they're your country. They're the only one that's in one of your country. I'm part of the people. It is only a really big battery. I'm not a very much in the environment. I'm a really, really shy. In common, I've been about the many, many, many people.
Thank you for that, Lori. So with that, committee members, we are now to item two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. We'll go ahead and for the record, this meeting is being recorded. So we will go ahead and at the back of the room with the Director Henderson, we'll start with you for introductions and then we'll come around this way and then come around to the committee members.
Yeah, they've been a lot of this, you know, it's sometimes you know, they just want, I don't know, same thing, you know, you know, it's yeah, oh, yeah, they've been only eighty-five chi. I actually can't even understand what you mean by something. I don't know. They are kind of kind of ahead on.
Yeah, but I'm sure a department associate, she had pretty cheap English, my issue was cheap. I wanted to talk quickly, you know, she had me there, I should I am the statistical research analyst for criminal investigation.
Good morning, my name is David, I'm the firm specialist for criminal investigation.
They've been wrong, so much. My issue, well, yeah, I'm just changing for the two, she go in the house. How they is in the shop?
Good morning, everybody and the members of the Law and Order Committee. My name is Lucinda Yellowhair. She a chief probation officer, she don't upon her, she only pass the chain. I don't get to change the channel to the chain, that's another key.
Good morning, everyone. I enjoy, I'm fully on Terry. I'm the senior probation officer. I work at a point, that's where I reside. I am understanding that on your best is cheap. So now if they're shooting, um, can I make additional?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Carmen Mason. I'm here with the probation department. I can be here, the chief probation officer and my colleagues. I work out of here, the window rock, supervisor. Um, my maternal client, bitter water, I have a total plan, that's equal. My chains are the key, you know, has people and my health.
Yeah, they've been, she, Jennifer, we're from check, she can't probation service, they're not machines. So for me, my, my, you know, I was just changing, I don't know, she can go. Um, I will be the shalva, I see, not show me. Yeah, today is my sheet. My position act. On a delegate acting senior officer for the office.
Morning, everyone. My name is Harry Ozzy. I'm the acting AOC director for jury.
Good morning. My name is Malcolm Leslie. I'm the acting criminal specialist director. Uh, we could have been, I'm so glad, bless his chain. Uh, she does, so my, uh, Bob, uh, Sutcher.
Uh, yeah, they've been, uh, they need to know times here. I'm talking slow, can I, I need to change to the chain, he does change, do she need a shalva? Uh, to watch it, do I get seen as she they, uh, District fourteen, eh, uh, uh, I'd say you had that council delegate, and she know, eh, that she not nice, not the, uh, District fourteen, eh, not should be I do, to watch, I don't like, I bet, oh, oh, boss, uh, oh, um, uh, my take, so there's five chapters in my district, so, uh, yeah, I don't know, I know, I do, yeah, they've been good morning. Morning, how they Arvin Mitchell, to the chain, and she was just changing, yeah, I need to see. No, I need to, I represent white girl, it's like, too. Now, that's the help and this is, thank you.
Morning, everyone. She has Steven Arviso, and she had since the cotton, she don't, but I need to change. She did, she did, she, 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 I am the to do, I see, not she. I represent District sixteen, which is a little six-pack chapter along I forty. I have, uh, the rue, I have a young bit to and church rock in the front. Uh, Pinedale, Mariana Lake and Smith Lake on the backside. Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Eugenia Charles Newton. I'm the chairwoman for Law and Order Committee. I represent the community of Shiprock. This is my second term serving as chairwoman, but also serving on the, on council. Uh, my clans are bitatni. I'm born for a shame, I should change for five, another.
All right.
Oh, yeah, they been on the show, yeah.
officers and general supervision of the chief probation officer. D other positions as deemed necessary by the chief probation officer in accordance with applicable laws, which would be the office technicians. Two, the Navajo Nation judicial branch employee policies and procedures shall be applicable to all Office of Probation Parole Services personnel. The next section uh I talks about the organization. Uh the organization structure for the Office of Probation Parole Services is attached. And then the next one under four is responsibility and authority. The Office of Probation Pro services have the following powers and responsibilities. A to implement the administrative structure and operating policies and procedures necessary to effectuate its legislative purposes and compliance with established judicial branch rules, regulations and policies. B to perform its functions and services with the judicial districts of the Navajo nation presently established in which may be established in future. C is to uh the the court by monitoring and supervising an adult or juvenile in fulfilling the conditions and obligation imposed by the court. And then um D to work and collaborate with tribal county, state, federal resources in order to provide more effective probation and parole services to the Navajo people. D E to provide information to courts, agencies and the community. This power responsibility includes providing information um through community outreach and education in order to participate in a safe reintegration of of clients into the community. F to perform independent investigations and question individuals, including witnesses, victims, family, friends, schools, agencies for information gathering purposes in order to generate necessary assessments and recommendation. This power and responsibility includes visits to home schools and places of employment. G uh to assist foreign jurisdictions with courtesy supervision of probationers and parolees living within the territorial jurisdiction of the Navajo Nation pursuant to an intergovernmental agreement. And then H to rehabil- to encourage rehabilitation, accountability and personal responsibility by using all practical resources to encourage community reintegration, competent self-worth and self-improvement. And then to um next one is to make recommendations to the court calculated to assist the clients reintegration into the community in a well-structured manner that includes community and family engagement. J to provide pre-sentence comprehensive pre-sentence reports, predisposition reports, risks and needs assessment and status reports where proper and necessary. K to assess adults and juveniles in detention in order to obtain information for assessments and reports and otherwise assist the court in monitoring or supervising an adult or juvenile person in fulfilling the condition and obligation imposed by the court. L to partner with peacemaking program in facilitating and providing direct traditional services. M to provide case management for services to clients and continual development, develop and maintain secure, current and accurate case records. N to process applications for legal counsel and indigency assessments in accordance with applicable law and policy. O to perform drug and alcohol tests when ordered by the court to do so. Then the B is the legislative oversight by Law and Order Committee. That is not the report, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, committee members said. Committee members, I believe that Mrs. Yellowhead has provided a summary of the amendment of this plan of operation. At this time, we do stand for questions.
Okay, uh Ms. Spencer, um did they use the full, excuse me, did they use the full twenty minutes?
Oh, no.
Eleven minutes left, would you like to waive the eleven minutes? With that then, are there any questions from the committee, uh Delegate um?
Thank you. I was just recently elected. Plan of operation usually. I guess uh question one is what made you want to amend your plan of operation? And then there's there's numerous questions that I have, then some of them would would just be comment. Uh the the second question. The second uh question would be anytime that you're gonna change your plan of operation. Did you involve your upper management and all the programs? Lot of times um programs supervisors just do their plan of operation but never involves the staff. So that would be question number two. Uh the other one is um is there any major changes? Major functional changes within your within your um amended plan of operation? Or is it just mainly to clarify a lot of these functions? So that would be my my three question for that.
Okay, um so Madam Chair, uh we have three questions for yourself and the agent. Um go ahead, answer those questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Notan. Thank you Delegate Mitchell for these questions. I'll go ahead and turn it over to my agent to answer the question.
Okay, um thank you uh Delegate Mitchell for those questions. And I'll go ahead and answer them as you asked. The first one was um what made us change, make these changes and amendments to to our planner of operation. Probation parole services is a department where we work with one-on-one a person. A person that was sentenced by the court or referred by the court in terms of pre-trial services, post-judgments and or third-party releases. And these individuals that are released and or referred to our departments, we work with directly one-on-one. And so in working with direct services in probation parole services, there are several factors that take into consideration. Um we work with people or Navajo people that reside here on Navajo that may reside outside jurisdiction that may want to come back or return. And so people that are coming in and out of the Navajo Nation. So those are changes. One of the several things that like I said that impacts changes is the cognitive behavior and the population that we work with. Um behavior changes, cognitive behavior, um one of the other factors is, you know, drug and alcohol. The trendings of the use of that, what's what's trending out there, what they bring back in here and what we identify, we see here. So it's never the same, we're not status quo. We have to keep uh um abreast of all changes that are coming in in terms of society, in terms of the population we work with. So we have to make these changes accordingly so that it is consistent with the direct services that we provide to help the people in terms of rehabilitation. You know, cognitive behavior changes, the risk assessment, the supervision and the monitoring. So even yet change in the league. We enhance, in other words, we're constantly enhancing our um plan of operation. Uh though, you know, they they as they uh move about in society, even society changes. Uh creatures, so we have to keep abreast of that to make those changes so that we're working consistently with with the population that we work with. That's one. Okay, number two is anytime we make these changes, yes, we do consult with upper management. Um in my position right now, I am sitting uh in a supervising position to the Director of Administrative of the Courts. And so in the last several years, of course, that has changed. And um each time that we make changes to this, we always, I always um consult with the uh Director, uh the Chief Justice and of course our Associate Attorney to make sure that the language is clarified, to make sure that legal clarification in proper language is used. And then, of course, I we also, myself with the senior probation officers, we coordinate and quarterly staff meetings with our staff. And so we're all constantly telling our staff and updating them changes and why we take a certain direction. And we're constantly training in those areas for the purpose again because of the changes in our society and the population we work with. So we let them know that these are things that need to be changed. And one of them, as you heard me talk about in the last few years, is the mandate of risk assessment and case plan tools. So outside agencies, they're way far ahead, but with Navajo, we still have yet some time to go to catch up with these prac- practices. And so um we included that so that we have a risk assessments and case plans that are efficient, accurate, you know, accountability and the best practices we use for purposes of rehabilitation. So that's why we do that for for question number two. And question number three, is is there any major changes to to um our plan of operation? There, I wouldn't say there is major changes that would impact the way we operate. However, there is changes as you go along with the 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 way our people, again, the way society changes, the population that we work with, new best practices that we utilize and how we utilize them and how effective they are to um the rehabilitative practices that we use and the processes that we use, the procedures that we go by. And so um it's basically something that is the same, but you'll see some changes. And one of them is the use of the risk assessments and case plan um that we're im- implementing into our um case monitoring and supervision. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Uh committee members, I believe that the three questions that Delegate Mitchell asked, they have been answered. We go ahead and we're gonna turn the floor back over to you. We stand for questions.
Go ahead. Thank you again. Just just the way I reviewed this, most of the changes is in the purpose section. Uh the just based on best practices and then just to update some of your procedures. I think that's where most of the changes are. Um so the next question, the Gia. The uh I don't see any changes in staffing. No changes in the Then the last question would be, this new your amended plan of operation, would it require additional funds? So those will be my questions.
Madam Chair.
Thank you for those questions. Delegate Mitchell, um I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to my agent at this time.
Okay, thank you. So for the purpose really and for the 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 clarification is really what is needed in purpose. Um we what we did was we condensed it to clarify it a little bit more than rather than, you know, um how you saw it written um is basically kind of again to avoid redundancies. Uh and so we just kind of clarified it and shortened it. So that's why you see a lot of the purposes in there. There's really no changes in including anything new into it other than again, just for um specific clarification under purposes. So that it's clearly clear and it's condensed and it's direct. So that's what it's for. Number two is um the the second question is the staffing um and organization. The organizational structure, the main organizational structure is um put together by the Administrative Office of the Courts. There is, there are structures set forth there and it's it's there. And so under probation parole services, we do have again, as it's as it's noted, the chief probation officer, the senior probation officer, and then the probation parole officer. Madam Chair, there is one section here that I don't see added to that, and perhaps I can request for an amendment which was including staff um. Let's see. Where I see, right here, it says under A, it says chief probation officer, senior probation officer, B, district probation officer, C, but I guess it could be other positions as deemed necessary by the chief probation officer is the um pre-sentence report writing uh office officers. There's two of them that we have that were they aren't vacant. So it could go under there or unless it could be under D because they are two positions that are fairly, that are new that is also included that do a lot of pre-sentence report investigation. They compile comprehensive report writing and they testify in court to their um reports. So that's something I think perhaps maybe that can be inserted in there. Um and then the um these are the staff that I just um went ahead and um made known from the chief probation officer, senior probation officer, the district probation officer. The office techs, which is under D, but there are two vacant positions for the pre-sentence investigators. There are two of them that are vacant right now. We're advertising for those two positions and they are primarily gonna be doing pre-trial work in terms of investigations and uh report writing. Okay. And then the third one um in probation parole services, there's always a need for additional funding, yes, always. Because the population we work with, um so as we move forward into the future um we don't know where it's unknown, we don't know what will be needed. Out there in our counterparts outside, they have staffing way beyond the staff that we have here, which is majorly just four or five that we added. They have pre-trial service officers and they have field officers. They have all kinds of 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 a team that they have together um that makes sure again for efficiency, consistency, re- to reduce recidivism rate, to ensure that our people, that this population we work with is in compliance. Yes, the 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 need for more manpower is needed. And I'm gonna go to one example is right now currently we do provide services in probation for pre-trial. Out there in outs- outside jurisdiction, there that's a separate unit on its own, it's a pre-trial unit. In probation, our probation officers provide that service. And then number two is um pre-trial services, pre-sentence report writers. So we finally got that, that is to be included. That is a separate unit also in itself. And then you have the field officers and outside, they have that um unit as a separate unit also. And then you have the probation parole services. Parole is also a separate unit. However, here on Navajo Nation, these, all of these units, one probation officer handles. Which is also not to forget juvenile cases, which are more complex cases. It requires a lot more work, it's complex and the statutory is very strict for them. So you gotta have a probation officer tending to those cases on its own. But we have that one probation officer that supervises and monitors adult cases and then switches their hats throughout the day and switches over to juvenile cases, complex cases, which means they may have to put things aside and tend to that case. Because there are time limits and the statutes and the procedures and the rules that say you have so many days to submit documents to update. And so we have one officer that uh does all these and, you know, switching their hats. So yes, we we do have a lack of manpower. Burnout's been noted, you know, stress is obviously there. So there is a need for for more um probation officers in these areas. As as we noted, so the burnout has been very much noted. Um so we do as much training as we can to ensure that our probation officers are solid in terms of mental health, well-being and uh stresses and so forth. So that's what I have.
Thank you for that, uh Ms. Yellowhair. So we'll go ahead and turn the floor back over, uh Vice Chair.
Okay, um before I move forward with this, uh Madam Chair, uh Ms. Yellowhair. I I believe I heard something about a amendment. To, how would you like to proceed with that that comment? You wanna call?
Um so as as the sponsor of this legislation, I think uh one thing that while while Ms. Yellowhair was talking, committee members, I'll just put this out there. Um usually with the uh plan of operations, we kind of see a like a chart with all of the um positions that are uh within that department or division. And I realized that it was not included in this um in this legislation. So that's number one. Uh and I think that that chart would would lay out like the positions. Um and I think that that would possibly if we were to include that chart, it would cover the all other um language, uh other positions as deemed necessary by the chief probation officer in accordance with applicable laws. Um so I think on on the one hand, uh we could do the amendment to include all of the positions, which would be really um lengthy. Or the option is to um wait and possibly table this legislation to get the the plan of operations with the uh I don't know, what is what you call it, like the flow chart or like? Yeah, the structure, yeah, which would actually include uh those positions that were mentioned. Uh so we have that and it's solidified within this uh legislation. Uh cause right now it does have chief probation officer. Um and we don't know at this point, I mean, we obviously we know that there is one chief probation officer. Uh but you know, we don't know if there is going to be additional uh physicians or chief probation officers that will be uh added. So I would like to um I guess maybe turn it over to the uh agent and ask the agent if she doesn't mind if we table this legislation to get that organizational chart in order. Uh and then to actually include it in the legislation so that it defines those um those positions. So I'll I'll leave it to the agent.
Okay, because this is a legal document um and the positions are deemed, you know, legal uh for the purpose of supervision and 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 these, some of these, some of these cases can be contested. And I want to make sure and ensure that the organizational structure with the positions are properly inserted there. In case there's legal questions down the road. So yes, um I think that would need to be included. I did initially include the organizational chart with this when it was given to you, but somewhere maybe at DOJ, they they just went and put it in word, cause it's first time I seen it like this. Usually there's a chart that's included. So but I can re-submit that one with it, um to amend.
Okay, uh so then do we have a motion to table this uh legislation to, and and then how long?
How long do you think you need to put all of these positions? Two weeks?
So there's motion to table this for two weeks, go to second that?
Uh maybe uh Vice Chair, maybe we could uh do it thirty days, cause keep in mind, we're we're coming into budget as well. So uh we wanted to just make sure that we get the budget legislations taken care of and then the budget taken care of. We don't want to run into any issues like we did last year. So um I I would I would uh prefer thirty days if we could table it to get the organizational chart in order. And to like uh basically list all of the positions and how they fall in that flow chart.
All right, and moving forward, then we have a motion to table uh legislation number zero zero nine six dash twenty-five, and there is a second. I believe there's no debate related to that uh motion. And uh so could we have a roll call vote, please? Yes, ma'am. Uh Mitchell. You made the motion, uh Delegate Charles.
I I kept, well, I can't, I think I can, huh? As a sponsor, yeah, I think I can. So I'll go ahead and make the motion and Delegate Mitchell can second.
Thank you for that. This is roll call table legislation number zero zero nine six dash two five.
I am in favor.
Audible, Arden Mitchell.
Oh, green.
Arden Mitchell votes green.
Yes.
I vote green.
Vice Chair for ten, we have three favorites, zero, two, without voting.
Okay. With uh three approving and one abstention, um chair does not vote or the pro temp chair does not vote, this motion passes and the legislation has been tabled for thirty days.
Thank you for that, Delegate Notan.
So with that, um I'd like to turn the floor back over to Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms.
So just clarification, I need to submit the chart. And then amend the positions to add the two PSRs.
So you're gonna create the organizational chart, right? Just kind of showing us like who, who I'm, we don't need the names, obviously, but how many, yeah, like how many direct supervisors do you have? How many key probation officers do you have? How like? And then how the new positions for the pre-sentence report writers, like how they fall into that, into that chart?
Yes, okay, yeah. And then all of the positions, that way we have it. So even down to secretaries, you know, we have that information. And if you could tell us like how many, you know, like how many total positions you have. That helps us in terms of making sure once it's approved, that at a minimum, that is you busy your staff. Uh so let's say in two years, you you need to increase it. Uh that's where people are, I guess the the next council is gonna be asking like where, who are, like what are those two positions and then where do they fall under that organization term?
Any other question?
No.
Okay, so with that, committee members, a motion to table has been made and it's been approved and voted on by this council. We thank you, Ms. Yellowhair. You are excused at this time. Uh so thirty days, uh within thirty days, we'll go ahead and call back this legislation, but Lorraine will be in uh contact to let you know when when we call it here at the Law and Order Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, committee members, we now move to item seven B, legislation number zero one one five dash two five and action relating to Law and Order Committee and NABE Kiyosuke Committee and the Navajo Nation Council. Confirming the appointment of Michael Henderson as the Navajo Na- as the Navajo Division of Public Safety Executive Director. The sponsor is Delegate Cheryl Lynn Yasi. It is eligible for uh today's action, which is why it's on the agenda. Committee members, can I get a motion and a second at this time?
Motion.
Motion made by Vice Chair Nathan Notas, second by Delegate Stephen Orviso. Uh so with that, committee members, we do have legislation number zero one one five dash two five. Final authority is at uh council. So the committee uh can handle this one of two ways. If there are questions, we'll give twenty minutes to the sponsor to provide a presentation and to allow uh Mr. Henderson to introduce himself and we can ask questions. Or if we are ready to go straight to vote, uh we can uh go straight to vote as well. Are there any questions at this time? Okay, not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. Legislation number zero one one five dash two five. Uh Lorraine, uh has this legislation been read into the record?
Um yes, Madam Chair, members of the Law and Order Committee. Um the nomination of the Law and Order, Rule Nine, legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice according, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. So with that, committee members, there are no questions. So we'll go ahead and proceed forward to a vote for legislation number zero one one five dash two five. All right, uh Lori, can you assist us with a poll vote, please?
Arden Stephen Orviso.
I am in favor. In favor. Well, green.
Thank you, Lori. Three favors or opposed. Legislation number zero one one five dash two five does proceed forward to NABE Kiyosuke. Council does have final authority for this legislation. We now proceed to item seven C. Item seven C, we have legislation number zero zero five one dash two five and action relating to resource and development, law order, budget and finance, NABE Kiyosuke and the Navajo Nation Council approving the Navajo Nation utility scale solar and energy storage system tax under twelve Navajo Nation Code, section states thirteen oh one to thirteen fourteen and amending twenty-four Navajo Nation Code sections two oh eight, four oh eight and six oh nine. The sponsor of this legislation is Delegate Carl, uh I'm sorry, Vice Chair Carl Slater. Co-sponsored by Speaker uh Crystaline Curley. Uh committee members, I did sign that legislation as well to be sponsor. Uh Delegate Slater did reach out this morning. He had a doctor's appointment. Uh Delegate Slater did reach out this morning. He had a doctor's appointment. It was not able to make it in. So I did offer to co-sponsors that we can move the legislation forward. Mr. Leslie, can you stick around? I have a couple of questions that I wanna ask. I wanna, or some things I wanna talk to you about.
Okay.
After the meeting, but we're almost out, almost out the door. So legislation number zero zero five one dash two five, has the record been updated? My signature as a co-sponsor on this legislation.
Uh, Madam Chair, they have not sent it yet.
It's been signed. It it has been signed, but they haven't sent it.
Madam Chair, so I just checked him right now. It hasn't been uploaded, but uh records said it, said they were gonna be uploading it. It's a mistake in the record.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, tell record uploads it and send that uh approval out to us as a committee. Five-minute break.
Are we all perfect?
We're, no, we're still on the record.
Are we, are we still on the record? Um.
I'll read to me out of his time soon.
Uh, Madam Chair, um you send it or not? They sent it. It's okay. We took a five-minute break. Hold on.
You got five more minutes?
Are we, are we ready to get back on?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you?
So Thursday is the last meeting, right? You can see, is it Thursday?
Yeah.
Thursday.
Yeah, so I will be talked to speaker. We are, um, I I asked to be excused from NABE. Um, yeah, cause Thursday, I think they have a scheduled, uh, it's not like two. Yeah, so which means that my flight probably won't leave until at four. So I won't get back until after midnight. I might just spend the night in Phoenix and then fly back that next morning on Friday morning. But yeah, they're supposed to, they send us out the agenda. Hopefully, uh, they said by Wednesday, they should have the agenda out. But it's gonna be at this point, they have, I think it's twelve tribes that are planning to be in attendance. Yeah. Okay, we're gonna come back out of recess at eleven oh four. Let's go ahead and uh do roll call so that we have on the record that a forum has been established.
In Commander Jerry, this is roll call to exit out of recess. Arvel Stephen Arviso. Arvel Harold M. Daniels is excused. Arvel Eugene Charles.
I'm here, I'm present.
Arvel Eugene Charles is present. Audible Nathan Noda.
Here.
Arvel Nathan Noda is present. Arvel Arvin Mitchell.
Here.
Arvel Arvin Mitchell present, Arvel Stephen Arviso.
I am present.
Arvel Stephen Arviso present, Madam Chair, four members present, including Chair.
Thank you for that, Lori. So we are back from recess. We called a quick recess. Uh, legislation number zero zero five one dash two five is a legislation that I did sign on to. Uh, but at the time, we did not have it sent to the committee. Uh, for the record, Lorraine, can you tell me if the legislation zero zero five one dash two five has been um, has been the, the uh signature of the, of myself on that?
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Law Order Committee. Yes, uh, legislation, you know, file the match, bookie five is has been sent an email and your, your signature is on there and Crystaline Curly, you know, Carl Swin are on it. Okay.
Thank you. And for the record, uh legislation number zero zero five one dash two five on the agenda, we currently have two sponsors. However, I recently signed on, so uh let the record reflect on the agenda that myself has been added on as a co-sponsor. I'm gonna go ahead and turn the floor over at this time to Vice Chair, who will handle the meeting since I am the co-sponsor for this legislation.
Okay. Um. Can I start by first asking, are you gonna need an agent? Or is that person here?
You know what? That is a good question. Um, I believe that, yes, I will need an agent because this is a new tax. So it probably is gonna be tax, uh, tax, not tax commission, what is it? Tax?
Tax.
The tax office or what is it? Yeah, yeah, so um, and I don't believe we have them here. Good point there. Uh, do you want to get Mitchell?
Good catch.
Mm-hmm, good catch.
That commission didn't make a comment and.
Oh, they did? And is their comment good or bad?
Bad.
Bad.
Then you get past them. It wasn't.
Oh, it wasn't introduced to them?
Yeah, so there's still a lot of research that still needs to be done.
Okay, then let's just go ahead and um, if you guys don't mind, let's not follow a motion or a second on this so that we can just go ahead and without having to table it, we can just uh refer it back to the next agenda. Uh, since the agent is not, is not present. Are you guys good with that?
I'm good.
Okay, then, perfect. Then we'll go ahead and move this to not, maybe not the next agenda. Cause remember, next week's agenda is only going to have one item on the agenda. And that is the vote on the chief justice. That's it. Um, so it'll be moved to maybe in a couple of weeks. And I'll go ahead and text Delegate Slater, uh, to let him know uh that tax commission was not here as an agent. And so this committee did not feel comfortable moving forward with the legislation. So we are now at item eight, close of the meeting. Are there any announcements at this time, committee members? Okay, not hearing anything. We're gonna go ahead and move to adjournment at this time. Can I get a motion in a second? Motion made by the Delegate Arvin Mitchell.
Second.
Second made by Delegate Stephen Arviso. So with that, committee members, let's go ahead and uh go to a roll call vote at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for close of meeting, item eight. Arvel Speaker Arviso.
I am in favor.
Arvel Stephen Arviso votes in favor, Arvel Nathan Noda.
Uh, green.
Arvel Nathan Noda votes green, Arvel Arvin Mitchell.
Well, great, yes.
Arvel Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, three in favor, zero opposed, with two not voting, including Chair Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Three in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting. Uh, we are hereby adjourned at eleven oh nine A M. Be mindful, committee members, then, now that we're out of LOC, at one o'clock, we do our um meeting on the public safety facility buildings. Uh, Lorraine, in the meantime, do you think you can get those little tags with the arrows on them? You know, the ones that usually like, I I know that uh finance always has them, you know, they put the tags and they tell us where to sign, but they've got like little arrows. And the purpose of that is we can write on them and we can, as we're having our substation meeting, we can redo this one. So we have the proper tabs in place.
Were we gonna get lunch or did we? Lunch is on your own. Right, move to the races, anything else?
No, this one o'clock, the meeting, the leadership meeting. You can call in, it's a private meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna stick around here.
Okay, we can call in.
Yes, yeah, you can call us. Be careful.